Thanks. That I didn't know. Well, that's that's that's. I don't care. And they're not. They're not. They face. They were. They were good until brought. But to push people, do you ever know people that you're giving out? It was funny. My name is. I don't know. There is that we can't get in. We're not gonna be able to get you all on Thursday because they're supposed to be. I'm there here. I'm. I don't know. You know, like the fun people didn't want to let it yet. It could be funny that they're good when they have power, for example. No communication to the labor there. What's going on today? It isn't what's clear there. There was fear. I think it was ready. They're basically the comfort. Shit. To her. That petition. Okay. What is going on here? Well, that went. I think. I don't know. That's. That is. Well, that's. 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 We've got.
Oh. All right. Good morning, everyone. Now we'll call a meeting to order. All right. Please rise and please clap.
Please clap please. I'd like to.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most high and great nations fall into heaven. We approach Zion and pray the most humble way we don't have. We give it the honor and the glory we so deserve. We pray, Father, as we look about us and see everything that is good and realize that all good comes from you. For your thankful Father, the help that allows us to be able to discuss the things which are before us. Give us wisdom, making the right decision, which will be most beneficial to the people we serve. Be with those who need your even hand. In you this name.
Amen. Well, I think with that, I will recall for our motion, please, through both minutes. All right. I have a motion from President. Do you have a second? Second from Rondell, also looking to be for your right hand. Motion carries. Transcrito. Okay. First up on the agenda this morning is the Southern Indiana Adult Cardiac Services Program.
Good morning. I'm DeSasha Popper, and this is Megan Bayless. And if we presented before, and you'll see that Sarah's missing our executive director, and she had her baby girl yesterday, and it was sad early. And so she was going to be here this morning to present, but instead we get taken in line. So we hope that we can answer any questions that you may have. And Southern Indiana Adult Cardiac Services, we cover five counties, and I think that most of you will be given grant representation. But we cover five counties, and one of those be Washington. We currently come in, we assist families, and we also have clients here, the two of them in Salem, Texas. And so we literally cover the whole area here, any work with API. And that's with any of the counties that we serve. So we work with different agencies, we provide resources, we have a 24-hour line, and so we are able to assist families as well if they were in. Is there anything specific you would like me to speak on? I know we spoke to several clients, and there are specific questions that you may have, or if you still want to know. I think we had a really thorough presentation during budget hearings, which was very helpful for us. And rumors to the apps, the financial apps that you will make. I think that's some 50s, they got pulled up, and we come through the commissioners' budget, but I think we've got a plan for where our name could potentially come from. Todd, do you have an update on that, or you might have? Chair?
I spoke with Judge Tavon, well, important. Right. There was a little bit of confusion even to us that there were some grants, grant funding available to you, which you are using for voting, I think, maybe employees. But then he had mentioned that the opioid settlement funds possibly means for that. So rather than, rather than maybe before, before any more is done, have you been in touch with the, with Tyra? That the probation, she's done in charge of the opioid funds. Have you talked to her?
We have not. We, I think it was kind of a new thing that was posed to us that that might be an option to go. And it was Judge Alvin that suggested that, that that might be an option. So we were kind of just in the, the way we gave, but absolutely, we could follow up with her and see if it's going to be.
Yes. Instead of going through two or three people, if you go right, the source, I think he would give you a lot more accurate information than what, because we're just getting our information from her. From here, it's, it's scary and dangerous. I would certainly encourage you to begin with. I said, I don't know. Sorry. Myra. Is this Monday or Tuesday? Myra. And go down that route. If something could be done there, because I know my main thing was that the opioid funds could be used case like this. And I certainly appreciate you coming once again, and I've been through four times, and I don't wish to feel like I've been getting the money out. You know, it's all about trying to find the funds to do this. And I know it's a good cause, and I know there's a great need for it. And so, you know, a lot of times when you think of guardianship, you know, it's kind of put aside, wayside. And I know myself, there are incidents this year here within our family where there are some, not some situations where people who were, you know, I guess they didn't need to find a grant, they didn't, whoever pushed, pushed these things forward, and paying this ransom, get hatred for them, come to find out that basically their lives were taken away from them as far as what they could do and what they couldn't do once you sign on the dotted line. I think education, that is very important, what these people have to deal with, you know, when they go through this process.
Absolutely. And I will say, I think you are willing to. And I know Judge Alvin feels that, you know, like. Great.
Yes. That's really all. All right. Correct.
So what we can do is go follow up with Myra. Yes, I should kind of see whether they go in the United States of America, which you know, at that point. Yeah. I can have any issues with that. We're just trying, I think we've all kind of agreed it seems like a very needed service, and we all are comfortable with that state program. Would look over and you could figure out which pocket of money it comes from, and it would be most sensitive, either from the commissioners' budget, if not from the commissioners' opioid settlement. So if you don't get anywhere, please let us know. Absolutely. And we do always appreciate it fine. We're always getting to the clients anyway, so it's not wasted. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the commissary foundation, because you have a copy of that within your packet. This would allow our share to be able to spend commissary money on specific activities outlined in the rest of the meeting. Are there any questions about this resolution? So is Brett Mike, you're gonna talk about it, or? Okay. I would think most of you would have a chance. I'm sorry. I've already had a chance to reach out to share your question on this. You all are open to taking a vote on this? Is it something you feel comfortable with?
Not. But with me, you know, if you do that, what did it mean? I, I wouldn't.
Okay. With that.
I have no problem. I don't have any. He's got, he's got maybe a little bit.
All right. The motion on the board from Brother Joe, second from Rondell. Any further discussion? All of them favor, please raise your right hand. Transcrito. Transcrito. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to the public hearing. So with each of you, I'm going to open them up individually, and then we will, I'll share the information with you, and then I will, I will entertain questions. So we'll start with opening up the Delaney Creek Conservancy Public Hearing. Meeting is now called to order. The budget estimate general is $23,500. Estimated revenue, $17,000. Estimated tax rate general, .12, .6. Budget estimate for cumulative maintenance, $20,000. Estimated levy for cumulative maintenance is $19,905. Estimated tax rate, cumulative maintenance for .1210. Do I have any comments from the public? With that, the next motion to close public hearing for the. First motion by Rondell has a second from President. All of them favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Meeting closed. Now we'll open the public hearing for the River Fire District. Budget estimate rating data fund is $24,000. Estimated funding rating data fund, zero. Uh, okay. That's okay. All right. We will. Okay. All right. So these need to take place at 9:30, so we will recompete these meetings, and we'll redo the delay. Okay. Okay. Let's move on down the agenda items, you salary organs in them, which is the share of American deputies. You all should have a copy of that. This was really brought to our attention during budget hearings. We had a couple years ago established a starting rate, wanting to make sure that that rate is applicable when you're hiring in your 40s, instead of hiring people at increased salary amount. So you do have a copy of that in your packet.
Okay. So explain to you.
Fair understanding of how it was supposed to be is kind of different than how I've had a great rep and granted the certification from the mayor for me, and I'm. So. I assume you can go deeper today. I prefer to hold up on the.
Okay. We'll see the budget discussion for later. I'm going to move through the items. If anybody had a public comment that they wanted to. Present.
Yeah. Have you gone ahead and approved the highway department structures? Have you actually, you know, gone ahead and voted to build the highway department this next year?
Well, first to move forward with that VOT agreement, I'm unsure where the measures are with that. Commissioners have an interest in the VOT agreement with the developer, and at that point, the council, it's only needed to identify repayment source.
Okay. And so.
It will likely be mainly on the commissioners' board.
Okay. So and it's not, you've kind of like, let me, I'm trying to understand this, that you've not really accepted it yet, but it's under consideration. Is that what it is by the council?
Well, I would say, publicly, we did discuss a maximum software amount that the council would be learning to identify repayment source on. So that is the only, only discussion that council has had assigned from, I mean, that's been, you know, public meeting, and we have not taken any formal action, because that's not kind of for us to do that.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to, you know, I didn't know if it was a done deal yet, is what I was trying to get at.
With the VOT process, it's typically that you mentioned, the developer enters into a VOT agreement with the executive body. So that is on commissioners' own. I'm unsure if they've been entered into an agreement.
And then, does it have to be approved by the council? Or is it just under?
It is a thing of the repayment source structure. So it can be different in different communities. For example, if it's coming all from commissioners' fund, typically the council doesn't have to approve it, but if we might have to approve it, depending on what the proposed repayment structure is. That would be a different repayment source.
Okay.
I'm glad you had. The, this is an ongoing discussion. I would like to have, and to strike the phone voice. And talk a little bit about what we had done in the past as far as on-call. And we, you guys approved the on-call pump, that's a dollar eighty-five an hour for next year. But there are some things going on with the hospital right now. They did not accept our proposal for us to do transfers for one reason or another. I don't know what's going on over there, but clearly we're not used to the payoffs. So, so right now, we are, we are doing a lot of hospital transfers until they get a contract with another ambulance service, which they are intentionally monitoring their feet. So we're gonna do all we can to service the citizens that are in town. So really nothing that, if they call the need and transfer, we're gonna do it, because we're obligated by law, and we have a moral obligation. We gave our word that we would help them during the interim, courtesy and concern for our own citizens, until they get a contract with an ambulance service. And I'd like to come in and give you some more of the details about what we would like to propose.
What we'd like to try to do is on the, on the budget approval, we went to the five dollars per hour for the on-call. I was wanting to know if what it would take, what we would, what we would have to do, go ahead and get that approved and put it into effect now versus the beginning of the year. Reason why I'm asking this is what Todd and brother, the hospital, the cell, Limbo, as far as trying to find transfers, or transport or the transfer. And we're still having difficulty getting personnel to pick up the on-call hours. Sure. You know, we only have the two truck situation. It's, it's, it's difficult for us to get that transferred because we just, we don't have insurance. And if we could get on-call and have an on-call label to us, and we would have an additional truck where we could, we could do what we need to get done for coverage in the county for emergency care, which plus, plus the additional of the transfers until the hospital can find somebody that's going to do them. I don't know. I haven't heard any more back from them as far as. Look, if they, if they're in discussions with anybody or not, I have heard, so I don't really know what's going on there. But if by chance it continues, when I talk to Donna at the hospital, which she said it could take, she told me it could take several weeks for them to get a contract signed to somebody providing, you know, how long is several weeks is, is up. But I was just wanting to know if, you know, if you go ahead and, and, you know, we're talking, if we're talking seven hundred and twenty hours in a thirty-day month, and we only cover half those hours, which is 360 hours, that additional dollar eighty-five an hour is, is only comes up 666 more dollars per month of what we've been operating. If we, if we went ahead and if you go ahead and take the five dollars an hour times 360 hours, which is half, you know, half of the, half of the hours a month, you're, you're talking over for the four months, you're talking about $7,200 of what you're talking. And like I said, basically, it's basically 666 dollars a month of what we're, what we're spending already. And the overhead, which is $3.15 and going up to the five dollar rate, that's, that's what we'd be looking at.
You were a $7,200 estimate, that I included was the total, not the difference?
Yeah. That's saying, that's saying two hundred, that's saying two hundred to be the five dollar an hour for the on-call for, for half the hours a month for the remainder of the year.
Not the difference, that's what we're gonna pay?
No, no.
Just as well.
No.
The new.
Yeah. You have it in the budget. Yeah. We had, we had that in the area, I didn't invite when you got free that five dollar an hour. And right now, certainly, we're, at the, at the end of August, we're never gonna follow things that came up, but at the end of August, we were still almost 142,000 under, under, under budget at the end of August. So, you know, it would, like I said, if there's any way that could be done, it would help us out financially. As far as getting coverage and being able to meet the demands.
Michelle, will we talk about this on a regular, where you've scheduled a meeting earlier in the year? Okay. So I'm gonna defer to legal counsel. How often we have to hear, like, bring it up in the public meeting before we can take action? If we're at one other meeting or hearing, are we able to take action today? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the on-call rate being increased to five dollars an hour effective immediately. All right. One time for Brother Joe. I have a second. Second from Joe. Any further discussion? All of them favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I would like to, whatever the board thinks, next thing that would happen on the hospital when we have to give them a certain point that we don't, we won't be considering. Fringe. I'm feeling, because you didn't leave it out there, just, are you able to bring it? I'm feeling like I didn't have hostage, like, if it were me.
Basically, with this, I think it's been an ongoing situation for the handful of, for the, for the hospital. Yes. And for me, with the thousand, it's been several. We've had all discussions, but have, and have any point then now, and we may probably go there totally. They have knocked their five to the public. We haven't made counsel that's involved in any of the steps to fight. Yes. Their, their label counsel has been involved in other decisions. Has been involved. I would hurt. Like I said, the proposal, we did. There's no way we could do that. They had several things in that proposal that we didn't get to do. If they were working there, but initiate a fine, if we resuming on a slate, that's notification of parents. Wasn't ridiculous. Scared. So I'm, so I'm totally new to this. So we felt, for helping parents first, hospital, with the threat of, or, or, person on the hospital.
Where's another?
Other, other county, or county or unit or whatever. Right. They usually, usually would all be facing, they'd be facing things, transferring. There is a rule says if it's local, we can play that. They, the problem will get, is, I mean, it's hard to take that service for a while. It's going to flow it down, and you know, usually the minimum is about three hours to take them for a service. At that time, that drug goes over, the patient, that we go to the service, and it's on-call through, yeah. And then it's, well, I don't know, a little bad. I think that we need to let the hospital know, we're gonna do a twelve-hour, make sure that the, that's one of our on-call cover. That needs to be the time to be, that we will redo the transfers. That's what I'm saying, that we're helping that all we can, that we get by, and they figure it out, that we're gonna bring somebody in, we're gonna focus on these twelve hours. We're gonna bring somebody else in, use them to transfer outside of that twelve hours. Have you guys, if you're doing a few twelve hours? Well, no. That, that's just, you know, I don't, I don't really know what I'm doing if we will get participation. I don't know. You're just, this is in the experimental stage, as far as, as, while we're gonna see if we get personnel to figure that out. I talked before to employees, friends, and said they'd step like this, but they often look at it. But didn't have interest in on-call anyhow. They said that didn't matter. Didn't, it wasn't gonna matter.
Didn't have interest in on-call anyhow, that didn't matter, didn't matter.
I think it will happen.
So, Andy, it also should be noted what the existing time frame is right now, when they have influence covered by another place, or what it was historically. I think residents of the county probably are unaware that it wasn't like, you know, twenty-four hours, maybe seven days a week. It was really on, what day is it, Tuesday to Thursdays between the side?
It was supposed to be in the Seals, they had, I didn't, they were supposed to be there, but they weren't. I mean, this, this has been on-call last couple of years, you know, I mean, where Seals, they would call us and say, hey, you guys, they transferred, we're just like, we can't, nothing, they were pressed. So, and, and Seals was putting all transfers, their typical response a lot of times is, they, the hospital would call and say, we got a transfer, like I said, on the, the Seals, this would be on Thursday. Seals would say, well, we can do it on Monday. You know, so it's kind of, you know, it was.
I think it's important for the residents of the community to understand what, what services provided. So we're looking at what can the county provide from the A and S standpoint, understanding what has been committed, I think is helpful.
So, no, that's a question. So, if you've got to turn down the Speedway, Speedway paying those people, it can't have been. Speedway's paying too bad, we charge the Speedway, we've got a contract, we've got a big contract that we, that Speedway signs. The Speedway pays for the truck, it's hundred and twenty-five per hour. And then we actually, we actually paid the police and the payroll, bit late, but that money comes back in from one of the, from Speedway to the bank.
It's not directly to the police, it's to the government.
And then exactly the same, I was like, I was saying, most schools that they request, and this, and a football game, they request. The month, the month of August, the month of August, we got almost five thousand dollars that we filed, that we filed in the account for doing. And then we've also signed one with East Washington, who are operating, who are providing, which is what I'm. So far this is the one we've got. But, but that's, that's the one too, so, so we'd be out there to where that.
That's what we brought up in the next meeting, that I don't think we're going to be accepting cash.
There we go.
Okay, I have a conversation to build up, it was kind of transacted, so that was just another conversation with the other.
No, no, it's. Now, they've always, Speedway's always paid my check, and the only gas deposit we had was in a freight boat in August, and that was from somebody that stopped the weed class, I think seventy dollars cash, we put it in up there and he, that company did, you know.
Relax, the conversation I had, well, that's the conversation.
I think it's a comment in terms of this being able to be implemented immediately might be difficult for payroll. So if we can start the next payroll cycle, that would be helpful. When that, we need to revise the motion and take another vote. So John, what do we need to do to remove that? Remove that and revise the motion.
Obviously, it can only happen soonest, available time.
Yes, so our, yes, our motion said that immediately.
Okay. I'll, I'll review the motion.
Okay, so I have a second. Okay, second from Gerald, all those, better, please raise your right hand. Okay, all right, thank you, Johnny.
Thanks.
All right, with that, it is finally nine-thirty, and we can now move on to our public hearings for. So we will go back and we will do the landing treaty again and report for minutes. Okay, we will now open the meeting for budget hearings or for the, for the public hearing for its landing treaty contingency, meaning it's not open. Budget estimate, general twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-three thousand, what's that dollars? Estimated levy, general seventeen thousand dollars, estimated tax rate, general point one, two, one, six. Budget, maintenance, twenty thousand dollars, estimated levy, maintenance, ninety thousand, nine hundred five dollars. Estimated tax rate, maintenance, point one, two, one, zero. Do I have any public comments on this? Okay, seeing none, I will, uh, with the fourth, our motion to close the public hearing for landing three contingency. Motion from Rondell, second from President, I'll just bear with me, raise your right hand, closing hearings, meaning it's closed. All right, so next we will open the Blue River Fire District meeting, meaning a town called the order for public hearing for Blue River Fire District. Budget estimate, ready date fund, twenty-four thousand dollars, estimated levy, ready date fund, zero. Estimated tax rate, ready date fund, zero. Budget estimate, fire general, one hundred, ten thousand dollars, estimated levy, fire general, fifty-two thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Estimated tax rate, fire general, point zero eight, one, six. Budget estimate, for fire, twenty thousand dollars, estimated levy, for fire, nineteen thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars. Estimated tax rate, for fire, point zero three, zero, four. Any public discussion or any public comment on this public hearing? This budget? Seeing none, I will call for a motion to close the public hearing for the Blue River Fire District. Motion from President, second from Gerald, all those a favor, please raise your right hand. All right, next we will open the public hearing for Brown Burn, Fire District, budget estimate, fire general, one hundred, three thousand, two hundred dollars. Estimated levy, fire general, one hundred, thirty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty-seven dollars. Estimated tax rate, fire general, point one, one, five, seven. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will call for a motion to close the public hearing for Brown Burn, Fire District. Motion to close Rondell, second from Gerald, all those a favor, please raise your right hand. Closing hearings, public hearing is closed. Okay, all right, next we have Washington County Solid Waste Management District, now calling the public hearing in order. Budget estimate, solid waste management, one million, five hundred forty-four thousand dollars, four hundred seventeen dollars. Estimated levy, solid waste management, one million, seventy-two thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars, estimated tax rate, solid waste management, point one, zero, seventy. Any discussion on this? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a motion to close the public hearing for the Washington County Solid Waste Management District. Motion from President, I have a second from Gerald, all those a favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, Michelle, before we do the Washington County one, do we need to have budget discussions before that, or are there any changes? The initial numbers are just me? Okay, all right, we will now open the public hearing for the Washington County budgets. And budget estimate, all funds, twenty-six million dollars, three, twenty-six million, three hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred seven dollars. Estimated levy, all funds, eight million, three hundred fifteen thousand dollars, estimated tax rate, all funds, point six, six, three, nine. Public comments on the county's budget? Okay, with that, I will entertain motion to close the public hearing for Washington County. Okay, I have a motion from President, you have a second, then from Gerald, all those a favor, please raise your right hand. Public hearing is closed. Okay, going back to the agenda, I notice, um, now we will go to the budget discussion.
I know that, uh, the stipends have been paid in the past. Well, the judges, uh, will remove from the budget. I wish to, uh, note from judgment, what against the brief research, remind pending of the rest. Is it, had any?
The article said in section nineteen of the Indiana Constitution, states of what the judges and their salary compensation have previously.
So the first term forward, you say that the compensation of judges, um, should not be.
You're talking stipend, right?
The stipend, five thousand dollars.
And that's. I think that's sad.
Well, but it, it, I was.
They used to say, what the, they.
I will say it was raised, it was raised, twenty, twenty-one, from twenty-five, hundred and five.
Wrong, did you say the main, the main, that, when they run for real, like.
I was, I talked to Rita Cummings about that, you know, once it's there, you can't remove it. What I did, they had a comment that when the judge runs for that office, as long as he knows that we're going to take that paper, but I don't know how he would do that. But I guess, I'll talk about that, is, is anyone have one charter seen that, he ran for reelection, and the other one is going to start without, so I don't know, that's number four now. Four favorite cases. They can refuse it. There's nothing other than, they can refuse it.
Refuse it?
My caps in the hand, please. But I would say it's going back to the.
I tried to get, well, that, that is, probably what you can look for that.
So, Michelle, when you prepare, I was thinking, I think it's important that we follow the advice of, and we please raise your state, second. Any other further budget discussions?
We need to vote on a, we just, never did vote on.
Yeah, it was, it was discussions during budget hearing, so we were really looking for consensus of, through each department, what are we willing to accept?
Legal counsel, statement, twenty, eight there. No, anyway, the Constitution, that's what I did. We have to go through the process of constitutional, take seventeen elections with the general's head rolling. We have to amend the Constitution. You mean, since the Constitution, we can add, we made it a sign.
But we don't want it to come aside.
Not what you paid, what's in the Constitution, the law, we lose it. It increases.
Little bit, article that, this was, this was, article seven, section nineteen of the Indiana Constitution states that judges shall at all time receive a compensation which shall not be diminished during their continuance in office. That's what that says. And it goes on, there's, there's a whole thing with it, that's why I, I've read it a certain way, I went to the attorney to read it, you know. It's the same thing that I know, that we're saying.
All right, with that, you know, I think the best course of action is call the legal counsel. So let's close that discussion and, you have anything else to add, White?
I think that we had to do what we had to do with this budget. Last year, we did business reserves quite a bit, we cannot continue to do that. We're not able to cover, we make our own money, we borrowed against our own ourselves to not be able to repay it back. So we haven't been able to time line this year, hopefully next year is a better year.
I would just like to say, you know, I want to take care of the employees, but I also want to protect the taxpayer. Those are the reasonable decisions to that.
I'm reading the numbers, I think we still, we're still a quarter thousand more than what we're getting. So we're still going over our budget, but it's not the one point nine we did last year. So we still have some reason, I want to be able, when I leave this office, I'm going to be able to leave whoever takes the seat. So the finances, all of the things that keep her going.
Thank you all for your time to, giving these hard conversations, and we really did go through with the fine tooth comb, so I'm very, very honored to serve alongside each of you. As you took that role very seriously and both the department, I think so, really, you know, I'm also very impressed with the fire mechanics this year. The amount of authorization that they had to show any sort of necessary, and things like to happen, and things like that. It's very impressive, and they spend a lot of time, um, doing a really good job at achieving each of us to pack their policies, so we're also, everybody all the way around. Okay, Sarah? John? Anything?
Something you think?
Anyone else in the audience?
I just wanted to say, um, my name is recently, and I've actually met with and several other local housing commissioners, again, this related, but it's necessarily about, we have a bunch of, uh, employee benefits. So I look at that side, I'm sure AI, we do employee benefits, and we do anything from property housing, we do employee benefits such as net homeownership and all that good stuff. And we have met with, there's five of us, Warren County, Washington County, Clark County, Rockford County, so many more that we met with, um, we, sorry, here. We met with them in July, and so what we have talked about is bringing counties together, have a body of co-op for help strips. Especially those that are self-funded, um, and, you know, looking at that because the size you are now, you face problems with increases, you face all, you know, lasers and things of that nature, and so we were looking at, um, building a, I think that, a buying co-op to help stabilize increases, not only in work, but, you know, as far as the county budget as well. And so we did talk to Philip and thought that we could bring this to the county household as well, and see if there's any interest in doing that. Like I said, we've got five counties and then, um, Green County, Overland, we're re-erat, some of them are creating businesses, and, you know, would, um, they are interested, they'd be willing to organize as well, as well. And, and then some as well. So it's something that you guys would love to look at, I would be happy to reach back out, to go and, to, to pay a look at it. But it is something that, what we, what we do is, would get basically shared in administration costs, with the fixed costs, and then the reinsurance part. would get basically shared in administration costs, with me, uh, fixed costs, and then the reinsurance contract. Your claims are your claims, so if you're having a good year, if a year's, having a bad year, they still have to pay their own claims. But you buy the fixed costs together, so the contract is stronger, you have a better admin cost, you have a stronger, um, staff loss, reinsurance contract, or lasers, and a waiting cap guarantee. But some, as, four million dollars, you would not pay me four million dollars. So I'm just kind of going to bring that, something, because it's, if you're interested, I'm happy to, um, answer any questions that you guys have.
What would be helpful, it's having, what is the step-by-step process that you've kind of outlined, so for something Friday, would you get to that? And then maybe some rate comparisons of communities that do find what, that we'd be prepared to, existing rates or future rates would be helpful. Think, kind of, understand what the financial impact would be, yeah, I've got some things that I will open up later, uh, to such a good time, but I'm just going to, at least, um, bring it up. Thank you. Also, uh, Michelle, please, I'll be the best person, please, and then, before you leave, if you wanna get in for a contact, you know. Does that need Mr. Evans? All right, Joe, anything? President? Love him?
Uh, it's good.
Okay. Gerald?
Not good, Andrew.
Rondell?
I've worked with, uh, Michelle, I've, but, I think, I think, in place of ability for talent, I want to stay hundred people, use it, and make sure we're maximizing for dollars, for the planning, because probably, twenty thousand dollars, um, I mean, all part. And that's something that, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, is a lot, to make sure, yeah, employees are using, I, I. Seven point two, and I couldn't think, uh, maybe, you do, use, um, yes, the, there's, that's, 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 everything. My thing is just maximize that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, just, a lot of use. A lot of people use it, and then I'm going, something good for every county, that, that, you know, except that, this is living at the same time.
I had any further, you know, questions?
There was, uh, the B D O T project that's, is going pretty well, seems to be on target, just trying to work with, uh, our engineer and the property owners about building sizes and locations and making sure everything's, what we would like to see, and something, I think, going well. Sophie, that's her.
Okay, great, so, all right, well, thank you all for your time, and as always, we'll see you, and I will entertain motion to agree. All right, welcome, um, Rondell, second from President, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Sure, thank you.
This is Cassie's card. All right. I'll put this on the, online later.